First of all, I welcome everyone out tonight. Appreciate it. Got a good crowd. There are masks out here on the table. If you don't have one and would like one, try to, as much as we can in this room, try to social distance and keep our interaction as much as we can to the limit, to a small number of people. Our invocation tonight will be by Commissioner Whitaker and our pledge will be by Commissioner Dickson.
God, our heavenly Father, this again, Lord, be coming for your eternal presence. We thank you, Almighty God, for being so good to us. Heavenly Father, we pray that you will let everyone sign my voice tonight. We pray, Lord, that you will give us the wisdom to make sound decisions that will benefit the citizens of this great county. Heavenly Father, we pray that you will take and bring healing to this nation of the coronavirus. Lord, during this week that we celebrate Thanksgiving and how good we have been to our country and to us, we pray, Lord, that you would be with us and grant us safety and for us and our loved ones during the holiday period. Heavenly Father, when we dismiss from this place, please do not release it from your spirit. In the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and our Savior, we ask it. Amen.
Okay, men.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Roll pile, Matt Clark.
Beverly Atwood's here. Mary Ann Baker's here. Ken Buckmacher's here. Shane Burton's here. Gary Clarity's here. Paul Dickey's here. Bill Ferguson's here. Jerry Ford's here. Bubba Gregory's here. Landon Dudley's here. Richard Harsh's here. Wyatt Jewell's here. Linda Johnson's here. Richard Johnson's here. Rachel Jones's here. David Donner's here. Amber Russell's here. Lonnie Taylor's here. Gary Walsh's here. Steve Whitaker's here. All 23.
Thank you. First item of business on our agenda is approval of our minutes from the October 26 regular meeting. And we also had a special call meeting on November the 5th. They've been distributed. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes?
Motion approved.
Mr. Ford makes motion approved both sets of minutes. Thank you by Mr. Clarity. All in favor, please say aye. Any oppose? It is done. Next is announcements. I have no announcements. Mayor, do you have any announcements?
No, sir.
Any, you know, any, Miss, any announcements?
Tell me something, I do have one.
Okay.
There's going to be an online public meeting for the local Parks and Recreation Fund grant on December 2nd. It'll be done via Zoom link. The information should be in the VIDEX, also on the county website. I can send it out to all the commissioners who want to join that. And this is required under that grant. Have to have two public meetings and two meetings with a civic group. So I still got one more public meeting, one more meeting with a civic group. Keep an eye on for that and participate online. Up to 100 people can participate. So we'll send that Zoom link to everyone.
Commissioners, any other announcements? Next on our agenda is amendments to the agenda and approve the agenda. We have a couple things to try to add tonight. First, we have another notary. We would add Teresa Dickerson. That's number five to your list of notaries. Teresa Dickerson is tied to. Also, the mayor's ready to make the appointment on the fire chief. We'd like to add that as item five under appointments, under active business, item 12. He's top of the second page. Mayor, do you have anything else?
No, sir.
Move to approve the agenda with these additions.
Have a motion to approve the agenda with the additions. And a second, a motion by Mr. Harsh and a second by Mr. Dickson. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? It is done. Thank you. Also, if any of the citizens, anybody here that would like to speak to any of the agenda items, would like for you to come forward and sign in if you're here to speak to any of the agenda items. Certainly, if it's an item of business, if it's your business, you don't have to sign in. We'll call on you if necessary. But anyone from the public that would like to speak to any of the agenda items. Next, seen none, we'll move on. Next will be our director of schools report. It is required by our charter that Dr. Satterfield give us a quarterly report on the finances and the progress of the schools. He's prepared to do that tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Jewell, for the brevity. I tried to pass out our financial statements for the first quarter in September. One of the things I've tried to do in the past is just to highlight some key areas. The areas highlighted in yellow on the first page basically are our revenues. We did current property tax at the very top, revenue code 40110. Looks like we brought in about a little over $7,000 during that quarter. This time last year, that I've highlighted in blue, that was a little over $21,000. Again, it's too, I guess an athletic term, it's too early in the game making bold predictions, so to speak. Next line item there is our local option sales tax. Again, there's an increase there of about $25,000 this time last year. Moving on down to the basic education program, better known as the BEP, that's running about the same as it did last year. Would like to call your attention to the last revenue code, and that's bonds issued. That is the middle school roof. So that amount of $1,049,170 would have to be taken away from that revenue code. So that's just an in and out. So that's, don't let that number confuse you a little bit. So when you look at what we brought in this year compared to last year, 1.8 to about 1.7, we brought in about $69,000 more than we did at this quarter last year. And then turning the page, again, that's the revenues continued. And which the last line is revenues compared to expenditures. The actual, this quarter is $1,643,380 is compared to $1,705,460. So we're running about $111,000 more better to the good than we were at this time last year. We have had to buy more cleaning supplies and that type of thing. But we also have had a couple of positions that we have not hired. So really, we're about to wash at this point. The last thing I always try to continue with is the addendum that I gave you, is that's the last page of the 1.1 general budget. And you can see that if you look at the first column left, those are actual numbers of 2018-19. And you can move to the, down to the bottom is the fund balance that ended on June 30, 2019 was 3.9 million. And then over time, that you can see on the third line from the bottom, that we drew from fund balance 542,867,000. This year, we're estimating to draw from fund balance 925,401. We do know that that number will be a little bit better when our audit comes. There's probably, I can say, we probably saved 300,000 on that. So that would be more closer to six. And then, and then we had a check on that, I checked on that before I came here today, is the $1,223,000 is an estimated number. What caused that, that number's a little high, is because when we did our budget early, we had budgeted the teacher rates, the 2.6, how many, the 2% that we thought we would get from the state and the BEP, and they later pulled that off. And then we also estimated our insurance figures to be high. So we think we can bring 300,000, 315,000 off of that, which gets us about to the point that we're losing a little over $500,000 from fund, I mean, we're drawing from fund balance a little over $500,000 a year. So I think it was best put by one of our board members this month, was, I thought it was pretty good, he said, if you go to the gas station, every time you go to the gas station, and you put in less fuel into your tank every time, at some point in time, you'll be walking. And that's a key point in trying to say here, that we're living off of our fund balance. And we're going to get to a point where one day, if we don't do something proactively, then we don't want to get a tax increase that none of us won't or can actually afford. So we need to be thinking about being proactive about this going forward in the future. Questions?
Any questions for Dr. Satterfield, Commissioner? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. And everybody have a happy night, too.
Thank you. Next will move into county mayor before. Mayor.
We are currently in the process of still working on the local parks recreation fund grant. I had a public meeting on that earlier today at 6:00. I'd like to thank everybody that came out for that. That is due on December 7. Multi-modal grant to the sidewalks up Broadway up to the intersection of Murray has been submitted, submitted on November 9. So they'll be going through their scoring process and we'll get information on that probably maybe February, March, whether or not we'll get accepted into that. We also submitted our notice of intent to apply for the built environment grant to the Tennessee Department of Health, and that would propose to do resurfacing of the tennis courts. They're currently in the process of scoring those and for accepting the application around is due January 27. So hopefully we'll know something on that soon. As Mr. Jewell said, we've added fire chief nomination of the agenda for tonight. Streetscape, I believe you've seen, they've come out and planted the landscaping and everything. They should still have some tops on the way down, and that should pretty much wrap up for the streetscape and hopefully that'll be done. Then at the county commission, I mean county commission work session, I'd like to do it here at the committee, commission meeting. We welcome Lonnie Taylor as the district, district four commissioner. I'm in on the courthouse floor. That will probably not be completed until sometime in mid-December. The installer actually had contracted COVID and had this about 14 days. Actually got to work, will be getting to work tomorrow or Wednesday. So hopefully that should be completed by mid-December. Mr. Edwards has hired his assistant, Ms. Mosley Highen, and she started a couple of weeks ago, and I spoke to her, and so far she's really enjoying it. So I know that's going to be a great help to Mr. Edwards and his office. Community Thanksgiving was put on last, last Sunday, the 18th, by Chamber of Commerce. And that was to bring meals to first responders, law enforcement, and anyone who was, couldn't get out of their home, that was taken to their home by Meals on Wheels. I think everybody participated in that, and they are accepting donations to cover the cost. So if anyone wants to make a donation to the Chamber of Commerce, they'll cover that cost. Send them to 328 Broadway, room, is it five?
Room seven.
Room seven. And we'll make sure that Natalie comes by and gets her mail from that, and she'll make sure she gets that donation. We're still working on with Mr. Butler to get dates for the open meeting, that training, that'll probably take place sometime in January. There was a discussion last week to answer a question that's been posed by Commissioner Donner about sports betting. That statute didn't have an effect on them number first. So we should start seeing those trickle in, though the county technical assistance service, you're probably not going to see a whole lot of that for quite a while. It's paid out quarterly, and it's not done on how much was paid in by your county, it's based on per capita. So all the money gets sent to the state, and then they send it out quarterly based on your population. So hopefully our new census numbers should be released. There's a preliminary release sometime, I think, maybe in December. And then the final number should come out in April, be sent to the states and us for redistricting purposes. Hopefully that'll bring us a little bit more money. Hopefully our population numbers go up, which the last estimate was 11,284. So that should help us out there. November 9, the health department did a free flu shot over here at the park. When I went, there was a pretty good turnout. I spoke to people participating, they think it went very well. That was being used as a trial run for distributing COVID vaccine when that comes out. So that is going to be part of the state's plan, and that went well. So it looks like when that comes to Tri- County, the same process will be used. It'll be set up over here at the park. So you'll drive in, down Marlene Street, turn into where the parking is for the Little League Field, go through a covered vaccination area. You may have to wait, may not have to wait, just depends on which vaccine comes out and what the requirements are. Actually get shots, see if they have any effects. Well, that's the process that will be used according to the Department of Health. And that's all I have for tonight. Mr. Jewell, if you want to have any questions on anything else.
Mr. Ford.
The cap itself is completed. The only thing that's still done is the access road. And that's been kind of a process due to rain and everything we've gotten, because that road for the first three or four feet is nothing but mud and rain. So, but that is technically is not part of the landfill project. That was coming in, that's it's not part of the landfill area. So that's not part of the project. It's not being reimbursed by TDEC. That's just something we got to work on, and it was just damaged very badly on the heavy equipment. So landfill project itself is complete as far as the cap, it's been inspected, been approved by TDEC. That's the annual inspection is going forward. So that is complete.
And we've received, they're part of our money?
We have not received all of it. I think we may be having a meeting tomorrow with TDEC on some reimbursement for engineering fees and some other things. They had some changeover to TDEC staff that has really set back the reimbursement on the grant. And so hopefully we'll speak to them tomorrow and get that process moving again.
Commissioners, any other questions for the mayor? Thank you. Next will move into our committee reports. Steering committee met on November the 5th. Approved amendments from October 6 meeting with best courthouse windows. Project that is still working on getting a historical study from a historical planner. Also, we are looking at putting together an RSP for that and trying to make sure there's no grammatical or clerical errors in it. There were some changes in the personnel policy that we've been working on, we're working on. We want to include the wage study in that. And the mayor has reached out to three different groups to provide a wage study and waiting to hear back on that. We also had several budget amendments which were all sent forward to the budget, the finance committee, and they're on your agenda tonight. I believe that was suggested to the steering committee. Next, budget finance met on November the 16th. We had six budget amendments that were all approved. They're on your agenda tonight. They were sent forward with favorable recommendations to the commission. We went over the county financial summaries and trustees reports. They were approved. There were no anomalies noted that could not be explained. There was one item that had some misclassification on it. Ms. Amy was able to find after we noticed it and figured out what was going on with that. She sent that out to all of us so that we would know what was misclassified there. It was just coded wrong when it was in. Mr. Clarity from the state. That's all we had on budget finance. Education committee met on the, on November the 9. Dr. Satterfield gave his report, gave his report on the school roof project, how it was proceeding. It's because of the weather and additional help, it's back on schedule and actually caught a little bit ahead of schedule proceeding very well. And I believe that was about all that I recall in education. Emergency services met November 19.
We approved the minutes from last two weeks, because we had a call meeting and a regular meeting. The, we linked the chair, vice chairman and secretary. I was voting to chairman Bill Ferguson's vice chair and Rachel Jones secretary. That was all I've been told.
Insurance.
We met November the 5th. It was more or less just elected chair, vice chair and secretary. That was the same, stayed the same. I was elected chair, Landon Dudley, vice chair and Linda Johnson secretary.
We met November the 19th. We elected officers. Stayed with the same slate of officers, myself as chair, Commissioner Wallace as vice chair, and Ms. Atwood as secretary. We discussed the video conferencing at the jail, the equipment that's been ordered for it, put that in for the judges to be able to do that remotely. And discussed a few other issues. One, the MOU with the system and sheriff's department, and talked about it briefly. It is in the hands of the attorneys, so we'll let them deal with that. And that was about it. Parks and Rec met twice, I believe.
Yeah, we had a meeting October 29. Elected officers, I was elected chair, Landon Dudley, vice chair, Beverly Atwood secretary. It was critically at the meeting. We had a public works report, Cliff Salee gave us an update on the, at the park. We talked about the ball field, the light poles down there have been in bad shape. Get him talking to, with Tri-County on this with KDO for Tri-County. He gave us some handouts from Musco, about some prices and stuff for lights. And we, we met with, me and Mr. Salee met with the guy down there at the park who was supposed to give us a bid, looking at stuff, but he didn't give us a bid for our next meeting. The mayor gave us an update on the grant opportunities for the local parks and recreation grant, and also built environment grant. The built environment grant was voted on earlier this year to resurface the tennis courts and pickleball courts for 60,000. Basketball court just named cleaning. So they had nothing to be done with basketball court size cleaning. And he gave us an update from where he'd been in touch with the Corps of Engineers about some, about the Taylor Landing property down there. Do you want to give us update?
I just met with some representatives from the Corps of Engineers at Taylor's Landing and asked about if they'd be willing to lease it to the county. I had spoken, I guess, November of last year to a representative from Corps of Engineers and a re-render from Congress in Rose's office. And they said, right now, the Corps doesn't have any money. Do any improvements in their access areas? Like what they've been doing is leasing it to a local government, and then they will go out and get grants and put money into it to fix that. This, two representatives I met with said they would be willing to add Taylor's Landing into a previous lease we had for Second Creek and Pine Cove. That lease expired in March 2018, so we're in discussion to reopen that lease. They would just add that to it. There'll be no, no lease tossed or anything like that. We'd have to pay, we would have to take over maintenance of the properties. We would have to maintain them in their current condition. But we could also then incorporate that in our Parks and Recreation Department and use that to go out and get grants to improve those sites that could go forward. We have to send them, they did that, the Parks and Recreation Committee did vote for me to continue discussions with them. I have to send them a letter of our intent along with a map showing the property we want to lease, and then a proposed rough outline of five-year schedule of improvements. So I have sent one of those items. I'll have to get the other two to them as we go, move forward. That's probably going to take, before we get to that lease stage, probably six months to a year. So when you're dealing with the Corps, things work slow, and they're still not back to full strength or going back into their offices yet.
Mr. Gregory, anything else?
That was about it. And the next meeting was November 17. This is where me and Mr. Salee met with John Edwards, an engineer from Florida State. He met us at the Little League Fields, and he was supposed to, was hoping he'd have us some prices together for that meeting, but he never did. He was probably just pushed for a little time. So we should be hearing something back from that. We welcomed Commissioner Lonnie Taylor as part of the Parks and Rec Committee. Then the mayor told us about Tri-County was going to add some fiber lines at the park for Wi-Fi, in which he agreed to do the additions. Would make it a hotspot. Not anything for great length of spectrum. Did he give us update on the grants again, the built environment, the local parks? And that's about it. Thank you.
Are there any other reports that we missed? Did we miss any committee reports? We'll say that we have, I think all the committees have met and elected their officers, with the exception of employee personnel, communications, and audit. Audit will not meet probably until there is a need for it, after we get the audit from the, from the commission. We'll get you a fresh list put together with who is carrying these various committees and things, and who's not what, as soon as we can get those others would be, would be helpful. Moving on, active business. Take up appointments. First, under appointments, I'm appointing fourth district commissioner Lonnie Taylor to the communications committee, the insurance committee, Parks and Recreation Committee, Law Enforcement Committee, and Steering Committee. I'd like to have a motion to approve those committee assignments for him. Mr. Gregory makes a motion. Ms. Jones makes a statement. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Does carry. Also, we have some reappointments on the housing authority board. Bobby Satterfield is up for reappointment for a five-year term. We'll take these all together. Industrial Development Board, Mr. Baylor has resigned his term, and the mayor has put forth Leah Verbel as his replacement on the Industrial Development Board. Water Utilities District Board, Mr. Baylor has resigned his term, and the mayor's put forth Heather Bay to assume the member at large position on the water utility board. We can take all three of those together. We can pull them out. If there's any questions about them, Mr. Ford, a motion to approve those. Second by Mr. Harsh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? It is done. Next, we'll move on to the fire chief appointment. I believe because of the questions that we've had in committee on this process and the things, problems we've had before, I think Mr. Cross is here to answer any questions about the interview process and the rating and how it was done. So mayor, do you want to kind of take this and tell us who your appointment is and how you came to that, that conclusion?
Well, my appointment's going to be with Mr. Jay Woodard, he was the only applicant for the position this time. He will go through the assessment panel that Mr. Cross put together and that encompassed, they have a incident response, role-playing exercise, a presentation to a public safety board regarding the interview about an incident that happened. And he was given a facsimile on how to make a report on that. And then there was an interview with three fire chiefs that went through a structured interview process that MTS put together. The three fire chiefs also scored the incident response, role-playing and the presentation. So, they were the only three people that scored it. And if there's any questions on how that was scored or anything like that, Mr. Cross is here to answer those questions, as MTS is the one that put that panel together. So he's here to answer any questions on that. And then after he's done, Mr. Woodard here is here to answer any questions if you have anything for him as well.
Thank you, mayor. May I be nothing to say, but I just wanted to make myself available if there were any I didn't want it to sound like you just had one candidate, you know, you got a pick it, you don't. But the process we put together for your candidate, he went through it, I had three fire chiefs like he said, I reviewed your resume, the resume, I picked people that weren't associated with the reverences like we did before, like we didn't do before. And all the fire chiefs came from at least an hour away, I think Baxter, Tennessee, Franklin, Kentucky, White House, White House. So we had a good, I mean, they were really good, they scored consistently, I thought they did really good. And I just wanted to see if there were any questions or comments from the Corps.
Mr. Dick.
Who did he hear today? The fire chief?
Mr. Woodard here.
Can I ask him a question?
He'll come up next. He questions Mr. Cross. Mr. Buckman.
Mr. Cross, you would just go through the scoring on page six and explain the modules in the scoring on the floor, please.
All right, let me, since nobody don't have it, I'll try to see if I can figure it out from the page. You're talking about all the reports, is that what you're looking at?
Yeah, page six of it, individual assessment, activity rating, it says.
Chief, see that right there, it might well have left that, that was his fire problem. Let's see here.
Think you might need to plug, unplug it, plug it back in, it lost connection.
Lost connection, didn't it? There it is. Chief, what page did you talk, would you say?
Page six of the pen, it says on mine.
It's maybe that page right there.
Right there. All right, what's your question?
Just explain the modules there and what they mean and what the scores mean if you will play.
Okay, I can do that. If we look right here, I'll start right here. This was the ratings on the candidate on all three of our measures that we did. I draw a red line across the number of two. We score on a scale between 1.00 and 3.00. So if the candidate walks in with a pulse and breathing on their own, they get a one. And the better they do from there, the higher the score goes. So, in our scoring system, somewhere around the two mark is considered competent in the situation that we're going, or whatever position it is. So, in the case of this, and you can see in the structured interview in the orange, the candidate was just over the line. You can also see in the tactical and command situation, we were just under the line. And in the presentation to the Public Safety Committee, which was the highest scoring, went above the line. And if I go back just another page here, go back here. And I think the total, yeah, on the whole assessment center was 2.04. That's when you take all of them together and average them out. So that was the way it showed up. Now, if we go back to what Chief Buckmaster had asked originally, if you look here on this first long spreadsheet right there, that is the nine competencies that we test for. Management principles, current legal issues, technology resources, interpersonal skills, analytical skills, management skills, motivation to achieve, work habits and teamwork and cooperation. And again, if you apply those same scoring, you know, if you walk in the room with a pulse on your own, breathing on your own, you get a one. And then the more you do, better after that, you can go up to a three. So, if you look under management principles, it was 2.10, 1.85, technology 1.9, interpersonal 2.2, analytical 2.2, management skills 2.2, motivation 2.1, work habits 2.25 and teamwork cooperation 2.15. So that was, all of those scores there were taken off the structured interview. The way I do the structured interview, I can test for all nine of those competency categories off that interview. Then if you move on down to the oral presentation, we got four scores off of that. So we had management principles, current legal issues, technology resources and analytical skills. And you can see 2.3 on the management principles, 210 on the legal, 2.05 on the technology, 2.35 on the analytical skills. So each one of these categories had a descriptor of what your, what my panel, your panel was scoring on. So it wasn't just used for that. And then on this, the command, role-playing, 1.8. So, I don't know if I answered your question, is there something else I need to clarify better, chief?
No, it's the management principles and current legal on the first two lines. I was just curious, what, you got different scores from what seemed to be the same thing?
Well, it was under two different measures. On the interview, we asked certain questions to come up with that legal aspect of that and that's where that score came up. And then on the oral presentation, when the candidate's doing a presentation, I give them a lot of, you know, some of it's facts, some of it's filler, some of it can be released, some of it shouldn't be released. And we kind of judge or rate the candidate legal on legal issues on that based on the appropriateness of what they release, how they release it, who they release it to and those type of things. So that's the reason for the two different scores. And that's the same on all of them. So if you look at the current legal issues, the management principles, it's on a different measure. So it's going to most likely have a different score. Any other questions or comments?
On the grid above, you said the red line, that marks the competent. You have to reach, your score has to be to the red line that means they're competent, right?
Well, what it means is, yeah, what it means is, and I tell people, I like to drive, that line's kind of wide, so it's an indicator. And even the mayor and I talked about, you know, when you had the one candidate, do we take them through all this? But we do find their strengths and weaknesses. And basically what we found is, you know, just to be very honest, in Nashville, Tennessee, they have fire hydrants, they have unlimited resources. And in this situation, I gave very limited resources and you had to go get water from the pump. So it's a whole different situation there. And then not to mention that, it's in a tabletop situation. Nobody sees anything burning and all that kind of stuff. So it's just, just to kind of preface that a little bit, if you will.
Any other questions? Thanks, Mr. Cross.
Y'all give me just a little bit of grace, I'd like to do a couple, a couple more things if it doesn't go along. I will. Chief, you're current fire chief, it's in the back of the room, I know y'all all know him. And I had the opportunity to actually be on the fire with him the other day. And I consider it an honor to have been there with you, chief. And I want to thank you for your service to this community. You've been here for many years, you've put a lot of effort into the community, the fire department. And for meeting you in public, I just wanted to say thank you very much and go retire and enjoy it. You're my man. One other thing I would like to bring to y'all's attention, and I'm going to blow this up later, now I'll see it pretty good up here. Your fire chief candidates, and it doesn't matter what candidate you went with, is a lot more than just these credentials. They're people. And I tell, in my assessment of training, I tell people, past performance is the best predictor of future performance. And I made some resume notes right here, but I just wanted to bring, oops, they won't do it on that, because that's a PDF. Let me go to my painting over here, and then I'll get out of your way and let y'all do y'all's business. I just appreciate you letting me have just a minute to do this.
We appreciate you being here, Steve. I want you to thank me though.
Oh, I know, I know. This is, I don't know if y'all can see that or not, but it's like I told you, candidates are really more than their credentials and their resume scores and their performance Your chief-elect, Jay Woodard, I'll imagine him a couple of years ago, just to be honest, I think, you got to know him someday in this process. And when I got to review his resume on this time, just a couple of things I wanted to bring to your attention here. He has 25, almost 25 years' experience in the fire service, right down the road in Nashville, a little bit of your department down the road. You know, he served 15 years as an engineer driving the fire apparatus and he spent a little over three years now, right, as a captain. And so he runs a fire company there. Even more important than all that is, I just wanted to, you're getting, you know, you're going to be voted, you're really on decorated fire service hero, in my opinion. The chief, or hopefully gonna be the chief, he got a commendation for his response to that Navy F-14 jet that crashed in Nashville. He also got one for making a rescue, I think of an elderly lady in an apartment. He rescued two children from a home fire and got a commendation for that. These are personal commendations, these not, I mean, this is for him. Unit citations for the 2010 Nashville flood, big response there. And this is for the unit, the whole unit did a great job on that. And they also rescued two firefighters. And that really struck my heart, when we get to rescue our home, that's a big deal. And then the bronze star, he earned for his response to the nursing home, NAC nursing home fire. And most of these things we remember from seeing on the news and those type of things. And so, it's hard to say without being a little bit emotional, but Jay, I really appreciate you, man. You made a lot of great efforts in Nashville and you've been really, really staying through this whole process. And I appreciate the whole, every, every part of it and considering the honor of knowing you too. So, thank you very much for your future service, if they vote this thing in tonight, to the city of Hartsfield, proud of your commitment, okay? Thank y'all very much, I appreciate y'all having me serve y'all.
Jay, come up and introduce yourself. I think we all have seen you before, but a lot of us probably haven't met artificially before.
My name's Jay Woodard, I've been here in the community a little over three years. Been part of this process last time and this time too. Rather look forward to possibly serving the community if y'all vote me in tonight. If you have any questions on why I should be here or anything else?
Mr. Dick, you have to go ahead. How do you plan on including fire department in Tugger County, if you got a selection?
I believe it's going to have to be an evaluation over the next few months on where they're at exactly as far as personnel, their training, their equipment that they have on hand and look at deficiencies, if any, that they need to improve on.
And the other one, what is your plan in the court chain with the emergency service?
I think that's possible. It's rumors that, you know, we had talked about that before, as y'all, as the commissioners, that was voted down before. I believe personally that it will serve the community better once it gets to the point of being able to be voted in, in the future maybe. But I think the fire department as it stands today needs a lot of improvements and we need to move forward before we could ever get to that point to join in to, or he just...
One more question, that's the last one. How would you go to the city to fight the fire if there's one happen at a house? Or would you be able to go inside and fight the fire? Or you go, you know, I mean, it depends on the sector, country.
It's going to depend on the personnel that shows up, what kind of certifications they have, what kind of training they have. Me personally, that is, I'm used to interior firefighting instead of exterior firefighting. So depends on the structure, depends on if there's anybody that could possibly be in the structure that needs to be rescued. There's a lot of different factors that would go into that.
Major, anyone else?
Have you worked with any of the volunteer firemen we have named?
No.
Never?
I've been down to a few of their training sessions and talked with them and stuff like that, but actually worked seamlessly with them.
Anyone else?
Will you be here every day or are you still working in Nashville?
No, I'm still working in Nashville every third day.
Anything else? Oh, sorry.
Why have you not attempted to join the fire department locally?
Well, moving up here, trying to get situated in this community and spending a lot of time in Nashville, training and my job there.
Okay. What actually prompted you to apply for the chief's position?
With my 25 years of experience in a major metropolitan city, my training, certifications and classes I've attended, I've always felt like I needed to give back to my community. And since I live here, I thought maybe that would be a good possibility to do.
Are you a member of any other volunteer organization? No other volunteer organization?
The Rescue Squad.
Rescue?
Yes.
How long have you been a member there?
A little over a year.
How many calls have you participated in with Rescue?
Zero rescue calls, yes.
Trainings?
Yes.
How many, about?
Two, three. A lot of my certifications left over from Nashville.
One thing I noticed in your application, you concentrated mostly on medical enhancement training, which neither the local fire department is currently responsible for, you require these two disciplines at this department?
Not at this time. But I think moving forward, that's something that the fire service in Hartsfield and the EMS service needs to look at. That is pretty standard across, you know, major communities in, in the US.
Have you been mostly, generally speaking, an urban paid firefighter?
Yes.
Do you believe there's a difference in a paid urban firefighter and a volunteer rural firefighter?
Yes.
A big difference?
I'm not going to say a big difference, but some difference, yes.
You're familiar with those differences, you believe that you can command those different aspects?
I believe so.
It's all like that.
Any others? Ms. Hatwood?
Do you plan to still work with Nashville?
Yes, at this time.
So if there was some reason for a recall to be called out here and you're in Nashville, then what is your aspect on that?
Well, hopefully the personnel that you had all the way up to this point would be able to handle the situation.
Assistant Ford?
How many days did you work in Nashville, Joe?
I work every third day, it's about 10 days a month. I work every third day, about 10 days a month.
So you would be basically home two-thirds of the time?
That's correct.
Have any idea when you would possibly be retiring from Nashville?
Not at this time.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jay.
I appreciate you.
Any further questions on this discussion before we go to vote? Everybody ready for a vote? A question is the formant of Mr. Jay Woodard as our fire chief for our volunteer fire department, as presented by the mayor. Ms. Rhea, roll call please.
Do we make a motion?
I'm sorry, have a motion approved, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion approved on Ms. Jones and a second on Ms. Love. Sorry, I've got a card for a hold.
Beverly Atwood?
Yes.
Mary Ann Baker?
No.
Ken Buckmaster?
No.
Shane Burton?
Yes.
Gary Clarity?
Yes.
Coy Dickey?
Yes.
Phil Ferguson?
Yes.
Jerry Ford?
Yes.
Bubba Gregory?
No.
Landon Dudley?
No.
Richard Harf?
Yes.
Dwight Jewell?
Yes.
Linda Johnson?
Yes.
Richard Johnson?
No.
Rachel Jones?
Yes.
David Noller?
Yes.
Amber Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Taylor?
No.
Gary Walsh?
Yes.
Steve Whittaker?
No.
Thirteen yes, seven no.
Does carry. Thank you, Mr. Woodard, your new fire chief. Next, we'll move into resolutions, just a chair.
Yeah, just a clarification question, why do we have a roll call vote on that appointment and not the other appointment?
Hell, I don't know, I just thought we'd need roll call on it.
He knows without explanation, he's definitely got me covered.
All right. Let's move on into resolutions, number 2020-2770. This is a resolution to establish an updated occupational safety and health program plan, provide for a safety director and implementation of such a program as is required by FEMA and OSHA while we're doing this at this time. Any questions on this? Have a motion approved by Commissioner Noller and second by Commissioner Clarity. Any discussion, any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next is resolution 2020-29704. This is policy updates to personnel policy for leave having to do with COVID. We did this last year, that timeline has run out, this is to extend that timeline on these COVID-related administrative leaves. Any questions on it? Have a motion to approve, disapprove, what are we doing?
This is like the same one as was already in place, right?
Yes, it just extends the time. Have a motion by Ms. Johnson to approve, second by Mr. Ford. Any other discussion, any other questions? Yes, Mr. Corrigan?
The last section amendments that said volunteer firefighters and emergency management personnel receive northern benefits except coverage, would that include, what I said in emergency management, does that include Mr. Bates, Mr. Carmen, and no such? Part of their pay is out of emergency management, it is not.
That's preferred by the mayor.
As far as benefits and stuff, any other kind of leave, this makes them eligible?
Well, this basically excludes them because they don't fall under this administrative leave, volunteer fire departments don't do it, so what that is is preferring those other kind of leave, those are classified as benefits. What this is, is when COVID first hit, there was no way for us to exclude them out of full leave without them going over their sick days, and there were some questions there, how to get them paid, how would that happen, because you're gonna have somebody missing 14 days of work. The federal government didn't have anything in place at time, the state didn't have anything in place at time, and it seemed like, looking around, the best option was to extend our administrative leave and make it, we put it at the end of this year because that was concurrent with what we were hearing from the federal government, so we made it December 31st, 2003. Obviously, we know COVID's still here, still with us, so we're just extending this until December 31st, 2021, but we had to put that language in there to make it understandable that they don't get any of these other kind of levers, but we had classified benefits of what they're classified as, and the personnel laws.
I just wanted to make sure that they were gonna be, those paid employees with emergency management are gonna receive the same benefits as the regular full-time employees that stay about a year.
Well, they'll get whatever, this is just, if they can get administrative leave before, this is just saying for COVID reasons, they can get it now, just for a longer period of time, before it maxed out at three days. You couldn't have it more than three days with good cause, determined by your department here. This uncovers it from the three-day requirement, so it can be up to that 14 days, once they test positive for COVID, or if they have someone in their home that tests positive, they're under quarantine, that will extend that time, because now you've got a possible 28 days, like testing. So we have coupled that from a limitation due to the specific reasons of COVID.
That answer questions? Any other questions? Any other questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, it is done. Next, we'll move into ordinances. First ordinance is 206-2021, like to open a public hearing on this ordinance, which is to adopt certain codes of the International Code of Cancel, pertaining to the residential building codes, as this update our building codes to term addition as required by state law. Anyone like to speak to this? This is a public hearing, anyone like to speak, any questions? Seem none?
Motion approved.
Send the close of public hearing. Have a motion to close the public hearing, a second by Ms. Atwood, a second by Ms. Baker. All in favor, closing public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
It is done, any opposed? Okay. Next, we will entertain the ordinance 206-2020-21. This is our second reading, it passed on October 26th, 16 to 3, on the first reading.
Motion approved.
Have a motion to approve and a second by Ms. Atwood, Mr. Burton, Ms. Atwood. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye. This roll call, I'm sorry, get a roll call.
Yes.
Mary Ann Baker?
Yes.
Ken Buckmaster?
Yes.
Shane Burton?
Yes.
Gary Clarity?
Yes.
Coy Dickey?
Yes.
Phil Ferguson?
Yes.
Jerry Ford?
Yes.
Bubba Gregory?
Yes.
Landon Dudley?
Yes.
Richard Harf?
Yes.
Dwight Jewell?
Yes.
Linda Johnson?
Yes.
Richard Johnson?
Yes.
Rachel Jones?
Yes.
David Noller?
Yes.
Amber Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Taylor?
Yes.
Gary Walsh?
Yes.
Steve Whittaker?
Yes.
As you were, I said yes.
It is done. Thank you. Next, we'll move into first reading, ordinance 207-2020-22. This is an ordinance to rezone a piece of property identified as parcel 11, tax map 019K, R1 to R2. This is our first reading on this, this is located up on the Hall of Camera Road. This did come forward from the planning commission, it was recommended at their November 9th meeting, and this will have a public hearing on the next, next round, whenever we have that agenda.
Make a motion approved.
Mr. Ford makes a motion approved, Mr. Gregory makes a second. Any questions on this one? Seem none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is ordinance 208-2020-23. This is an ordinance to rezone a parcel from A1 to R1, identified as parcel 13, tax map 031. This is a parcel of land that's down on Highway 231, they're wanting to cut off a one-acre tract and resuminate the residential. Ms. Russell?
Motion approved.
Have a motion approved, Ms. Harf makes a second. Any questions on this one? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is done. Next is ordinance 209-2029-24, this is an ordinance to rezone a parcel from C2 commercial to R3, this is identified as parcel 24102, tax map 019K. This is a parcel off of Hayes Avenue, in behind food land, shopping center, the administration building, over in that area, changing it from C2 to R3, all residential development. Mr. Buckmaster?
Motion approved.
Have a motion approved, Ms. Baker makes a second. Any further questions on this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That one's done too. Those will be up for second, we have public hearing in our January meetings. Budget amendments, we have the budget amendments. We have several, all of these will be taken, they need to be done separately. We can take all these in one, or we can pull them out separately. First one is VA 101, old eight bar for the senior center, this is amending the 101 county general fund, this is some, some of their community funds that won't be used for other materials, the supplies, amount of $3,317. The second one is VA 10109, it's an insurance recovery from the damages courthouse, it will be used in for county building repairs, to pay for the repairs on the county buildings. Another 101 is some CARES Act grant funding money that came in for the senior center, they're wanting to put it into other supplies and equipment, I think they're wanting the purpose of copier, some other miscellaneous thing, that was in the amount of $8,500. And then your 116 solid waste fund, wanting to move a line item category in labor from a mechanic to a labor position, just moving the same dollars from one line, line item to another, $21,050. And the last one is 14112, this is for the general purpose food fund, where we've had contributions come in on a UTrust grant, and they're putting that into other supplies and materials out of the principal office, that one's $300. There's also 141 general purpose food fund, where there's some state education funds, miscellaneous funds that they're wanting to put into various health services. Is there any of those that we need to pull out separately, or any questions about any one of those? Mr. Clarity?
Take a motion to approve.
Have a motion approved, all, second by Ms. Harf. Any question on any of them? I'm pressing all of them in one vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please say no. Taking care of our budget amendments, we have five notaries, four in your package, one that we added, Randall Kirby with the Tennessee Department of Health, Johnny Beal with the Four Cities, Shannon Smith with the Sheriff's Department, Tracy Belter with Citizens Bank, Teresa Dickerson with TCHS. Ms. Baker?
Motion approved.
Have a motion to approve by Ms. Baker and second with Ms. Jones. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It's done. Are there any other business commissioners? Mayor, do you have any other business? No, sir. Come to our agenda, time for public comment, anyone from the public, this is your opportunity to jump up and speak to it. Anyone like to make a comment? Seem none? Mr. Walsh?
Make a motion, Jeremy. Mark Paul, call him, man.
All in favor?